Okay, Mr. Mayor, we're ready. Go live whenever you're ready. Hey, Mr. Mayor, we're ready. Go live whenever you're ready. Good evening. Welcome to the City of Sugar Land City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 20th. We've got a really special presentation for you tonight. A little bit about our agenda. First, we're going to have the invocation by Councilmember McCutcheon and the pledge. And then when we do that, we're going to have two special recognitions. Former Mayor Lee Duggan, we're going to recognize him. His family's here. I'll introduce them in just a minute. Then the second recognition is the 2020 Serve Sugar Land Volunteers of the Year. They're virtual, so I'll recognize them up on the screen. Carol, could you lead us in the invocation and the pledge?
Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we pause at this time to give thanks for the men and women who lead our nation, our state, and our great city. Thank you for their dedication and commitment. Thank you for our brave soldiers who protect our national interest around the world. Father, we ask for protection of our city and its citizens and of our first responders who are put in harm's way as they serve our citizens. Thank you for our city staff as they work on behalf of our citizens. As we meet now, please guide our thoughts and our words. Give us wisdom, discernment, courage, and compassion. Help us lead in a way that glorifies you and honors our citizens. It is with humility and gratitude that we make these requests. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For those of you that couldn't join us earlier, we had a, you know, real kind of a special reception for Mayor Lee Duggan's family. We got a chance to have some of his closest friends, some people I haven't seen in a little over a year because of the pandemic. Got a chance to tell some stories and recognize not only what a great man he was, but the contributions that he made to our city. We heard from a couple of former mayors. We heard from some council members. Herb's still with us. Alan's still with us. We've got a couple of the folks that knew him really well. At this time, I'm going to ask the family, and I'm going to call you by name, and if you guys had come up, and then I think Pam, you're going to say a few words. So Lee and his wife Suzie and grandson Calvin Carpenter, if you guys could come up. John and Debbie Gamble, that was Lee's daughter and husband. Lee was Lee's son. Michael is Debbie's son and wife Susan. Melanie Gamblehausen, Debbie's daughter, and her family, or her husband, if y'all will come over. Come right up here. I'll kind of spread out across there so we can get you on the camera. And then Pam Gray, Tyler Gray, and Kelsey Gray, if y'all could come up. Darlene McNeely. Darlene, you still here? She, you don't want to come up? Come on, Darlene.
And also, can you recognize Juanita?
Oh, yeah, Juanita. Oh, yeah. I didn't know you were up there. Hey, Juanita. Juanita was in Lee's later, well, she took care of it. I think you were the second wife, right? You took care of it. Fortunately, I got to know Peggy too. So Pam, please, for yours.
When I was asked to say something on behalf of the family, I went through kind of the mayoral archive that I have in my house in a box. And I thought this speech of Dad's was appropriate to share because it was January 7, 2005, and it was his speech at the dedication of the new city hall that we're sitting in here today. And there's a picture of Dad at a podium, and that's the picture of him giving the speech. And he said, "Every year I have served the City of Sugar Land has been an exciting, wonderful blessing to me. My term as mayor began in 1987 and ended in 1996. Prior to that, I served on city council for eight years. Watching the small, company town full of wonderful people grow into the dynamic metropolis it is today has been an adventure too exciting to recount in these few minutes. During my years as mayor, we had the privilege of purchasing the airport and watching its amazing growth. I remember participating in the groundbreaking of First Colony Mall and anticipating the surrounding area's growth. I remember the pride I felt when The Wall Street Journal named Sugar Land as one of the top 10 cities in the nation in which to live and work. But most of all, I remember the people who helped make this happen. All of the citizens and far-sighted planners and developers that have helped create our city as we know it today. This impressive new city hall is the culmination of the hopes and dreams of all who have been involved with the city, and especially for those who have lived here, both young and old, that helped carry the torch of success. I view today as a stepping stone into an ever more exciting place in which to live and work. May God bless the City of Sugar Land." So I was also asked to share a funny story as a child of a mayor, I guess. And so I have this great memory of, I was in college, oh, no, I was right out of college when Dad became mayor, and I'd come home to wash clothes, and Mom and Dad were gone, and I was like laying on the couch. It's 5:00, and I get a phone call. Well, it's this woman panicked because she's colored her hair, and the city has turned off the water. I'm like, "Well, you need to call the city." And she's like, "I did. It's 5:00. They're closed." And I'm like, "Oh, Lord, I don't know what to tell you. I'm so sorry." So I anxiously awaited my father to return home to tell him about this conversation. But that's my fun memory of being the daughter of a mayor, and that's all I have to say. And thank you for honoring him tonight. It's been very special for our family.
You know, to kind of put it in perspective, I know Nancy's mom moved here in 1980. And at that time, 1980, there were about 6,000 people in Sugar Land. Nancy and I moved in 1990, and there were around 16,000. There's 126,000 now. That wouldn't have been possible without the vision of Lee Duggan and others. You know, I talk a lot about the councils that came, the mayors that came before me. I'm the 10th mayor. And the mayors that came before me, the councils that came before me, it was their vision and their accomplishments that allow us to enjoy what we have here today. Certainly, Lee was at the top of that list. So, and your mom was a sweetheart. My wife just loved Peggy. And it's, we didn't get to see him until, or meet him until their later years, but we certainly got to know about the accomplishments. So this is all about him. I've got a proclamation. This is a proclamation from the office of the Mayor. Mayor Lee Manning Duggan Jr., April 20 of 2021. Whereas Lee Manning Duggan Jr., 1928 to 2020, served on the Sugar Land City Council from 1979 to 1986, and is mayor from 1987 to 1996. And whereas Mayor Duggan was elected to city council in '79 after moving to Sugar Land 10 years earlier, he served eight years in the council before running for mayor. At that time, Sugar Land was a general law city with five council members and a non-voting mayor who served as the city's chief executive. And I mean, what an executive he was, I'm sure. Under Duggan's leadership, Sugar Land enjoyed a number of accomplishments. And whereas his proudest accomplishment for Sugar Land was the acquisition of Wholefield Airport, in which Duggan played a central role, providing the city with its own regional airport in 1990. Mayor Duggan had a vision for the airport and fought hard to make sure the city was able to purchase the facility, and contributions were memorialized by naming a street at the airport in his honor. And whereas former Mayor Lee Duggan also served as a volunteer at Methodist Hospital, was a member of the Sugar Land Exchange Club, the Fort Bend Subsidance District Board, and the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo, where he was a lifetime member and with many others. And that's given into my hand as the mayor. We honor Lee. We honor you all as his family, and we want to just tell you we love you, and we hope that someday maybe someone else will serve on city council. We might even get a mayor out of this group. And we're going to take some pictures. Council, if y'all would come down, if y'all could come forward, council members would get behind you. Come on, fans, just here, and council members get behind you. There you go. Don't be shy. Come on. Our lady is trying to hide right there.
All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. Last one. One, two, three. All right, looks great. Thank you very much.
For those of you that don't know, that's the best part of the job right there. Our second recognition is to recognize our Serve Sugar Land Volunteers of the Year. Is Paulina, Paulina's on the screen. There you are, Paulina. Paulina, I think you're going to go through, Paulina Valero is our community engagement coordinator, and she's going to recognize our volunteers. Our volunteer program, Serve Sugar Land, was launched 14 years ago as a way for the residents of Sugar Land and surrounding neighborhoods to be civically engaged and active members in their community through volunteerism. The COVID-19 pandemic significantly impacted our volunteer program in 2020, causing it to shut down over several weeks. But our volunteers are pretty strong and resilient, and they're committed to public service even in the face of unprecedented challenges. Over 160 volunteers contributed more than 3,400 hours of service to the city, which equals over $92,000 in in-kind donations. Departments were asked to nominate a volunteer who represents our values and enhances the delivery of city services by sharing their skills, positive outlook, and fostering an atmosphere of community. This year's special recognition went to six individuals who volunteered across various city departments. Each of you exemplifies what it means to be model citizens, and we are proud to have each of you as a leader in our volunteer program. Thank you for your service to our community. Paulina, would you like to say a few words, or would you like to read the names and recognize the people in their department?
Yes. Hello, Mayor and City Council. Good evening to everyone. First, I would like to ask the volunteers who are joining us virtually to turn on their cameras so that we can see you all and that you can wave when I call your name. So first, I want to point out that this group of volunteers collectively have donated more than 6,357 hours to the city since becoming Serve Sugar Land Volunteers. Last year alone, they contributed over 883 hours, which comes up to $24,025.76 in in-kind donations. And although we're able to quantify their service in terms of a dollar amount, their contributions and their time are priceless. So now, when I call out your names, um, excuse me. There's a bit of an emergency with baby, but if you can hear me okay, I will go ahead and continue unless you want, okay. Everything is good. Okay. Seems like we're okay. Okay, so when I call out your names, please wave at the camera so that we can be, you can be recognized. And now, the 2020 Volunteers of the Year are, all right, hold on one second. Let me see if I have, okay, Obon. All right, so first is Obon Wu. Hi, Obon. He was nominated by the Parks and Recreation Department. He was nominated for his participation in the design and construction of an irrigation system at the Butterfly Garden at Memorial Park. He also led a group of fellow volunteers during their recent freeze to cover the plants and uncover them. So thanks to that, all the plants at the Butterfly Garden are now back in bloom this spring. And he is also an active member of our current Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. So thank you, Obon. And next, we have Aleka. Do I have you? I don't know if I, if we have Aleka. I don't see her, but I'll continue. She was nominated by the Animal Services Department. She began volunteering at the shelter in 2019 and has since donated more than 600 hours. She's done everything from bathing, grooming, playing, cleaning, walking dogs, even in the rain in Texas summers. And she's always done that with true passion and dedication. So thank you to Aleka. Next, we have Una Ramanathan. Hi, Una. Did I say your name right? I'm so sorry. You can go ahead and unmute yourself and let us know how to pronounce it, please.
Una Ramanathan.
Ramanathan. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So she was nominated, she's a fitness instructor at the T. Harmon Center. She began teaching her class virtually within a week of the senior center closing down due to the pandemic. Her class went from 25 students per class twice a week to five times a week with an average of 75 to 80 students per class. She's described by her nominator as committed, dedicated, caring, punctual, and irreplaceable. Thank you, Una. Next, we have Brenda Frye, nominated by the municipal court, and she's joining us today from the court, joined by all the staff there. So we're very happy that she's in with the team that she's volunteering regularly. And so this is actually her third nomination for Volunteer of the Year, and I want to read a little portion of the nomination form submitted for her, and it says, "Words simply cannot explain the appreciation I have for her and all that she has and continues to do for the municipal court. We are truly blessed to have had her assistance throughout the years and look forward to many more years of having her with us. She's truly an asset to our division, and she deserves to know how much she is loved and appreciated for doing what she does." So thank you, Brenda. Then we have Mr. Ted Lee. Hello. He was nominated by the Police Department for his contribution to the Community Assistance Support Team, or CAST. He became a CAST member in January of 2020, and thanks to him, officers were greeted with an enthusiastic and smiling volunteer at the Temperature Checks Station, where he worked at over, where he worked over 30 assignments. He is an enthusiastic supporter of our community and the Serve Sugar Land Police Department. He always has a smile on his face and a kind word to say. Thank you, Ted. And then last but not least, we also have Gabriel Rodriguez, nominated by the Planning Department, Planning and Development Services. He has not joined, he wasn't able to join us today, but he has also been nominated for a third time in a row. Gabriel takes tremendous pride in performing every task, even when it might not be the most exciting. Recognizing that the value it brings to the organization is huge. He's always asking for more assignments and speaks proudly of being an asset to the City of Sugar Land and a volunteer. He is described as awesome and a keeper by his nominator. So thank you to Gabriel. So last year was challenging, to say the least, but our volunteers showed us that we can always count on them even in the middle of a global pandemic. So for everything that you do for our city, we thank you. And that is all. Thank you again to all our volunteers, Obon, Aleka, Una, Brenda, Ted, and Gabriel. You can log off the call now. That's it for our recognition. Thank you so much.
We're going to move now to item number one, public comment. This is reserved for anybody that wants to comment about a current agenda item. Thomas, do we have anybody signed up?
No, sir. Mr. Mayor, nobody has signed up.
All right, thank you, Thomas. Anybody from the audience? We're going to move on to item number two, consent agenda. These items are going to be taken as one motion unless a council member wants to pull an item. If they want to pull an item, we'll have, we'll take the remaining items as one motion, and then we'll have a separate presentation on that item. Council members, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
I've got a motion by Nashad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Stuart. Any other discussion? Give votes this time, please. And it's a 7-0 vote. Thank you, council members. Item number three, contracts and agreements. Three A consideration of a national authorization of a consent agreement and Second Amendment to the lease agreement binding between the City of Sugar Land, Texas. But binding between the City of Sugar Land, Texas, SL Baseball LLC and Sugar Land Astros LLC, and joined by Houston Astros LLC, for certain limited purposes, we have with us Ms. Jennifer Mayer, our Assistant City Manager. Jennifer?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. On behalf of a much larger team that was integral to making tonight possible, I'm extremely excited to be here tonight to present the consent agreement and Second Amendment to our baseball lease. This agreement is part of the final steps to formalizing our partnership with the Houston Astros for AAA Baseball. Just to go over an outline of the presentation, we'll start with some introductions and background. I'll then step you through a high-level overview of the agreement, and then I think our partners would like to share a few words as well. And so with that, and without further ado, I would like to introduce our partners who are here with us tonight. We have Bob Marcy and Kevin Zlatnik, owners of the Sugar Land Skeeters, Giles Kibbing, who's Senior Vice President and General Counsel for the Houston Astros, and Mark Arnold, our attorney, is here as well. Thank you to everyone. Next slide, please. What's great about Sugar Land is that we are constantly evaluating how we can build on our success while at the same time looking at how we can do new things as we look to the future. And Constellation Field and the Sugar Land Skeeters are such great examples of this. It's really actually in my mind hard to believe that this team and venue were first discussed by a citizen-led visioning task force 14 years ago as part of a larger strategy to expand our sales tax base and through the development of unique regional destinations. In fact, not only was this one of five venues identified by the task force, it was actually the very first destination that the city pursued and delivered, bolstered by voter approval of funding mechanisms in 2008. And overall, we can say this strategy has been incredibly successful and has continued to guide us since the Skeeters played their first game in 2012, contributing significant benefit to the community, attracting visitors, and solidifying our recognition as an economic powerhouse and entertainment destination. Next slide, please. One of the things that we're all so proud of is that we didn't just set out to build any minor league baseball stadium. Our earliest agreements captured a bigger vision for developing a first-class AAA caliber stadium and a destination activity center to provide opportunities for family fun, entertainment, and recreation as well. Formal development and lease agreements were approved with opening day partners in October 2010, paving the way for a 25-year minor league baseball partnership. And now, looking back a decade later, I'm just so excited that those efforts have paid off and have provided such a return on investment, given that all of this has been done without the use of any general property tax dollars. Next slide. In addition, we also set out to partner with the best of the private sector partners that we could find in the country. And we are proud that we found some of the best in 2010, and then again in 2014, when the Zlatnik family assumed full ownership. Under their leadership, the Skeeters have been a really important part of our community and our local economy. From winning multiple championships to giving back to the community, to finding a really creative way to play baseball last summer, including, and I'd add, some of the most creative team names I've ever heard of, we could not be more proud of what the Zlatnik family has achieved in Sugar Land. And all the while, they were seeing great success within the Atlantic League, the Zlatniks continued to share our passion for one day bringing AAA Baseball to Sugar Land, and they were an important part in making this dream a reality. Thank you. Next slide, please. With that is minor league baseball, and their system was being realigned. Last year, we identified an opportunity to pursue AAA Baseball in earnest. And after quick but extensive conversation, we were proud to announce a partnership for the Sugar Land Skeeters to join the Houston Astros family as part of theirs as their AAA affiliate in November. And so while I kind of mentioned, or like I mentioned a minute ago, 2021 may be the year that we play our first AAA game in Sugar Land, but this was really made possible a decade ago from the community's vision and the city council's decision to construct the stadium with this opportunity in mind, as well as the city's commitment to Sugar Land, the Sugar Land way, and our continued conservative financial management, along with opportunistic use of economic development dollars. And so without a doubt, this is an incredible opportunity to generate even greater economic benefit and hopefully spur even more development around the areas, or in the areas around the stadium. So thank you to you, the city council, and to everyone who played a part in making this possible. Next slide, please. Now, some details real quick. Overall, the agreement before you tonight for consideration formalizes our partnership with the Astros. Among the most important things, the agreement includes a lease extension to 2045, resetting our full 25-year partnership. And the agreement provides a framework for the Astros to invest annually in stadium enhancements, as well as make significant improvements to the stadium for player development and to the stadium for player development and fan experience upgrades over the next several years. Many of these improvements, such as a complete redesign of the clubhouse, the addition of a new bullpen, bullpen fan area, and a new playing surface, will actually be completed prior to their home opener on May twentieth. Additionally, the lease agreement ensures that the club will continue to be active members of the Sherwoodland community, and it maintains one of our main pillars when it comes to public-private partnerships, that all of the city's support will be limited to capital expenditures and funded through the use of dollars restricted for economic development through the 4B Corporation. And then finally, the club will continue to be responsible for all O and M expenditures and the payment of annual rent. Next slide, please. With that, I'd like to recommend that the city council approve the consent agreement and Second Amendment to the lease by and between the city of Sherwoodland, SL Baseball, Sherwoodland Astros, enjoined by the Houston Astros for limited purposes. And then upon your approval, we'll quickly turn to looking at how to celebrate the Skeeters' first AAA game on May sixth in their home opener versus the El Paso Chihuahuas on May twentieth. But before I take any questions, I would like to give our partners a moment to say a few words if they would like to. So I know we have Kevin Zlatnik, and I think Giles could be scheduled to speak. Thank you.
I'll go ahead, I guess, Giles. It's been, you know, kind of a wild ride over the last ten years from being your original man and rights partner at Constellation Field way back in 2009 or 2010 to taking over operational control in 2014, and then, you know, today officially making this AAA franchise and ceding the operational control over to the Astros. So I just want to thank a number of people very quickly. I want to thank the mayor and the city council. Obviously, without your vision of way back when, none of this would have been possible at all. You know, I don't know of another city that kind of puts their money where their mouth is. They say they want to be a destination city, and what better way to do that than bring a AAA team to the city? You know, I want to give special thanks to Jennifer May. We've had a great partnership over five or six years. You know, we don't always agree with everything, but you're always in the know and always accessible, so I really, really want to thank you for a great partnership over a number of years. And then finally, you know, to look to the future, super excited to sort of hand over the keys and ride shotgun as the Astros take over the operational control. You know, it doesn't take a genius to see what they've done to the franchise down at Minute Maid Park since they took over in 2012. The team on the field is great. Minute Maid Park is exponentially more beautiful than it was prior to them taking it over, and I think you can already see the blueprint to what they're doing at Constellation Field. So I again just want to thank everybody on behalf of my entire family, of course, my parents, Marcy and Bob are on the line as well. And then I guess I'll turn it over straight to Giles.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Jennifer. Well, we're very excited about this opportunity. It's something that we've been looking at for a long time. Bob, Marcy, and Kevin have been great members of the Astros organization and great leaders of the Sherwoodland Skeeters, and they've been wanting to make this happen and work with us for a long time now. So we finally had the opportunity to do so with the realignment of minor league baseball. And as Jennifer said, we worked very quickly in making this happen. We've been through similar projects here with the Astros. We've done a lot here at Minute Maid Park. We built a West Palm, a facility for our spring training complex in West Palm Beach, Florida. We've done a lot in Corpus Christi since we bought the team there. We built a stadium for Fayetteville for our CMLA, Fayetteville, North Carolina. And this is another great opportunity for us to continue doing what Jim has always pushed us to do, and that is provide a premier player development and fan experience facility for the Astros brand to improve our player development where we can, to provide the fans and be a member of the community that's supportive of us, and that we're very supportive of that community. And we've invested a lot of money into all of those facilities, and we're in the middle of doing it right now here in Sherwoodland. And I can tell you, having gone through that and been involved in all of those projects, I do want to say what a great experience it has been working with Jennifer May and Mike Goodrum. The city of Sherwoodland should be very proud of their representatives and how they have all handled this and worked with us, and they have represented you very well. So we're committed to being great community partners and providing this wonderful facility to the people in Sherwoodland. We are, as Jennifer said earlier, come May twentieth, we will have already invested eight million dollars into the facility with the upgrades that we are, and it's just phase one of our projects. So we're very excited about it. We're really happy about the partnership that has been established with the city of Sherwoodland, and we're very appreciative of the Zlatniks and what they've done, not only in Sherwoodland, but as well as their involvement with the Astros organization. So thank you all very much. We really appreciate your support.
Thank you, Giles. Jennifer, I'd like to talk, I'd like to comment, please. To Bob and Marcy and Kevin, we really appreciate the partnership that we've had with you all. Time and time again, you guys have stepped up. I remember Hurricane Harvey, when Marcy called me, and we were in the middle of trying to figure out where we could place families that were on the road that had no place to go, and Marcy said, hey, we'll open the gates of the stadium, need a little help with water, but our place is your place. Bring them on in. And that's, that just demonstrates how time and again the Zlatnik family stepped up. They were not only owners, they didn't just deliver a championship, Atlantic League championship in 2016 and 2018. You all became part of Sherwoodland, and you invested not only your money, you invested your time, and we appreciate that. We very much appreciate the investment you made in Sherwoodland, and we won't forget that. Giles, to you and the Astros organization, we look forward to a bright future with you all. I mean, I think it's no surprise, you guys are a first-class organization in every respect, and we look forward to the great things that we're going to accomplish with the Astros organization, and we look forward to working with you and Mr. Crane. Jennifer May. Jennifer May, and she doesn't like me to do this, but I'm going to do it anyway. You know, it's really true that when rubber meets the road, Jennifer was absolutely tenacious with the way she negotiated the deal and kept the parties at the table. There were many times where it, I think both parties, as I say, it kind of went off track. Jennifer refused to give up, and she kept coming back and coming back and working with Giles and working with the Zlatniks and working the deal. She never, ever gave up, and in the end, I know she's been frustrated a few times. Matter of fact, I think she's getting ready to go on vacation because they've worn her out, but the city of Sherwoodland owes a deep debt of gratitude to Jennifer May and the fact that she hung in there when a lot of people, most people, would not have stayed in the game, and Sherwoodland's going to be the beneficiary. We're going to be the beneficiary, as is the Astros organization. So with that, I'll make the motion to approve the contract. I'll open it up for questions. Anybody have questions?
Second.
If I may, it's not so much a question as I think it's very appropriate that this is a discussion tonight, considering the honor we paid to former Mayor Lee Duggan. That was a monumental mayor, and tonight we have a monumental relationship with the Houston Astros, and I am thrilled to be a part of this and witness this tonight.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Mayor, second, and let's play ball.
Lauren, if I got a second, by Kermali. Any questions? If you'll put it this time, please. And it passes seven oh. Thank you, council members. And before we, before I forget, there was one person I forgot to mention, Mark Arnold's on the line, and he was our counsel through this, and he did a phenomenal job. I know Jennifer would tell you that he was pretty much a rock. He knows how to negotiate, and he knows how to support. You put the two of them together, and that's one heck of a team. I'd stack them up against everybody. So Mark, thank you for your help in getting this thing done.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item number, where are we? Item number three B, consideration of an action authorization of a contract with Swift Corporation LLC in the amount of $365,000 for construction of the police station's security fencing, CIP CMU 2102, and authorization of a budget amendment in the amount of $410,000 from the police department's state seizure fund. And we have with us Mr. Lane Wolf, vertical construction manager, and Eric Robbins, our police chief. Eric, Lane?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you. I'll go ahead and get it started. First of all, I just want to say this is overdue, long overdue. Our police department was built in 1996, actually when former Mayor Lee Duggan, who we recognized earlier was the mayor, he did the dedication for our building. It's a great facility, but it was built at a time when there was very much less tension in our society. Over the years, you know, our city has grown, our traffic has grown and increased, and so we definitely believe that security measures are needed in our police department. We've had some management studies, as well as some, our seizures audit that actually recommended stronger measures to protect our sensitive information in our police vehicles and around our police department. As we've noted before, we're one of the only police departments, not only in Fort Bend County, but in the Houston region, that do not have a security fencing around the police facility. So we believe that this is going to enhance our security, protect not only our officers, our staff, our equipment, and our police facilities, our property, and we definitely believe is needed. So from that, I'll turn it over to Lane Wolf to talk about the actual contract.
Thank you, Eric.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. If we could see the next slide, please. Our scope of work right now, it includes ornamental fencing and vinyl coated chain link fencing. It's a combination that we're using around the site. There are three vehicular gates and three personnel gates that will be going in. The trades include fencing, electrical power. We get to provide power to all the various gates and run it back into the building and security access control. What we're doing is we're mimicking the same style of fencing that we use for security over at the surface water treatment plant. Next slide. Here are some actual photos from the surface water treatment plant. On the left, you see the ornamental metal, and to the right, you see it's a higher-grade chain link fencing. It's got a tighter mesh pattern to it, and it's vinyl coated, and three strands of barbed wire on top. Next slide. Site plan. If you look at, starting on the right-hand side, that is the front of the building, and that is the side of the face, is Highway Six, we'll see that there's a solid red line that kind of starts at the top, continues on at the bottom, goes along the bottom where the commercial development is, and extends over to the left-hand side, which is Soldier's Field. That solid line represents the ornamental metal fencing. It's the more decorative fencing. When you get to the top of the page, the north side, that is the city property that we are adjacent to, that we own. In the future, we're going to have the EOC building construction in that area and some parking lot work, and possibly the future ports building. We did not want to put in ornamental fencing at that location or to be torn up at a later date, so we met with First Colony Association, and they agreed to let us put the vinyl coated black chain link fencing in that area only. You can see also where the cyan or light blue indicates where the three vehicular gates are located. The green indicates the personnel gates, and like I said, all these areas are going to require power, so from each location, we will be routing power back into the building to the electrical room and providing access control using the city's car access system. Next slide. Our design professional on the job is PJL Architects. We advertised for a bid on January 27th and also February 3rd. I conducted a pre-bid onsite review for all the contractors to review the site so that they were familiar with everything going on there. We received bids on the 25th. Bids were reviewed by Jeff Gerber at PJL, myself representing engineering and purchasing as well. Next slide. So the lowest qualified bid was Swift Corporation. The engineer's estimate, my estimate working on this project, was $422,000. We had three bidders disqualified. They did not follow the bid instructions properly. I actually, I show those three companies there, but the qualified companies are Swift Corporation Construction Rentments, Swift being the qualified low bid. We've listed out their security fencing pricing, the electrical, which is included in their bid, access control, which is coordination on their part of $1,000 for a total of $365,000. DSC access control, that is who provides our city access control with all of our badges. I will be managing that contract myself, and that's why we have the $1,000 to coordinate with Swift Corporation. On top of that, we'll have some unforeseen conditions, I'm sure, so we keep a minimal 5% contingency with a project total of $410,000. Next slide. The budget on this funding will be utilized from 212 state seizure funds for the police department. We have fencing in the electrical for $365,000. DSC access control at $21,866. The contingency for if we run into any sprinkler lines, have to relocate, repair, landscaping, and miscellaneous is a little over $23,000 for an overall project budget of $410,000. Next slide. Our recommendation, the engineering police department recommend the city council approve a construction contract with the Swift Corporation LLC for the construction of the police station's security fencing, CMU 2102, in the amount of $365,000, and approve a budget amendment in the amount of $410,000 from the police department's state seizure funds. Next slide. Any questions?
Questions? Council members? Go.
A resident asked me out of curiosity why the city needed to go to the HOA for permission to build a fence, or I guess maybe it's probably from an architectural standpoint.
It's within their area. We have to, whenever we're going through the construction process, we have to present those plans to the First Colony Association for review.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to approve.
Got a motion by McCutcheon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Lane? You'll vote at this time, please. And it's a seven oh vote. Thank you, council members. Item number four, municipal utility district bonds, four A, consideration of an action on authorizing issuance of Fort Bend Municipal Utility District Number 139, unlimited tax refunding bonds, Series 2021, in the amount of $5,020,000. Rosita Bashun, our budget manager. Rosita?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this evening, Fort Bend Mad 139 is requesting city council's consideration and approval for the Series 2021 refunding bonds of $5,020,000. Fort Bend Mad 139 is part of the master plan community of Delphine Sherwoodland. The district consists of 333 acres and was created in April 2005. Next slide, please. The District 2020 certified taxable value is $262.34 million. The 2020 debt service tax rate is 25.5 cents, while the maintenance and operation rate is 15 cents for a total tax rate of 40.5 cents. Next slide, please. After the proposed refunding, the district total outstanding debt will be approximately Next slide, please. The proposed refunding will pay off $4.865 million of its unlimited tax bond Series 2013. The refund- The refunding bonds will be callable on March 1st, 2026. The Mud Board of Directors met on April 15th and have set a minimum net present value savings of 9%, which equates to $440,000. Next, please. The district plans to sell the bonds next month. The staff have reviewed the district request, and it complies with the city resolution number 11-07. Please note that this debt will not and will never be part of the City of Sugar Land's debt. Staff recommends approval of this issue. Next, please. At this time, we'll be happy to answer any question. The district's financial advisor, Christine Crowell from Masters and Advisors, is here with us today.
Any questions, councilmembers? Rosita, I've got a question. What's the projected interest rate?
I did not get the projected interest rate. It was just the net present value savings overall is what I got from the POS, the preliminary officials.
In order to project the net present value savings, you get to have an interest rate. Okay. Is the financial advisor there? Can they answer the question?
Yes, sir. This is Christine Crowell with Masters and Advisors, and we are seeing, based on preliminary numbers, once again, preliminary, the market changes every day, but sub-2% interest rates based on a triple B credit insurance will be on this deal, so they'll sell out a double A credit. So we should be in the market, as Rosita said, in the next three weeks, so we are hopeful that we should hit our minimum 9% net present value savings, which I believe y'all adhere to a minimum 3% savings, and actually, our last round of numbers from our underwriter is closer to 12%. So we're feeling good.
Wonderful. Thank you. I'll make the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Kermally. You'll vote at this time, please? And it passes 7-0. Thank you, councilmembers. Item number five, see council city manager reports. 5A, see council member reports. Carol, let's start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Fort Bend County IFTAR along with council members Kermally and Ferguson.
Wonderful. Stuart?
No report, Mayor. I can't remember.
Jennifer?
No report, Mayor.
Asha?
Mayor, I attended the drive-through IFTAR with our mayor from Houston, Mayor Turner, your good friend, and council member Letitia Plummer this past Saturday where 3,000 meals were distributed.
Wonderful. William?
Sir, very similar. I'm learning more and more about the residents and the members of our community through the IFTAR and other events. I even hosted a little listening tour on Sunday about the 3-1-1 service and our trash service, so it's been a full week of fun.
Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just make a slight comment. I know the attorney will... Anyway, we have one of the best police forces in the nation. They stand between us and evil 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 52 weeks a year. And the fact that we had to build a fence to protect them is one of the saddest votes I've ever taken, but I respect our police department, and if this is what they need, then they should get it. But that was a sad commentary on what's going on these days, even in the City of Sugar Land.
Appreciate that, Stuart.
That's a good report, Mayor.
Yes, sir. I'd just like to remind people to vote. We're in the middle, we've got two contested elections in the city. We've got, that's in District 4 and District 1, and then we also have a school district election. Never been more important to make your voice heard and vote. With that, I'll go to item number 5B, city manager report. Mike? Mike doesn't have a report. Item number 6, closed executive session, 6A. Section 551071, consultation with the attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding benchmark acquisitions LLC versus City of Sugar Land. And item number B, closed executive session is authorized by 551 Texas Government Code in accordance with Section 551074, personnel matters. At this time, we're going to adjourn into closed executive session. I think we're going to the other room, are we? Are we? We're staying here?